Yeah.
But she treats it more than I think she would treat it. Inches.
Two blocks long.
Two blocks.
One, two, three.
We need to stop thinking. Right, right, right. So, yeah, that's what we're doing.
Then we have conversation.
Are you kidding?
Yeah, I got the background.
Fortunately, Cheryl.
My love, my.
Jerry, where's for?
Can you get all that?
Oh, yeah, to become up there. Uh, yeah, I work up there. You asked me. Yeah, I did that one thing. Uh, pretty much. He's in a skid steer. He's in a skid steer. He's just sitting there.
Hey, but you can't.
Talking and driving himself. Seriously.
Oh, I wouldn't.
Oh, no.
I wouldn't.
Yes, Jackson, I think.
Yeah.
Seriously.
He's been on the droidy, isn't he, there?
Oh, yeah. I know.
Well, there was. There was. Last time they won ten games, the season was ten. And they were one four game sensitive. They went.
We'll call tonight's meeting the Lloyd City Council to bring to your attention that we happen to revise this agenda this evening, uh, resolutions, as well as the revision of that. Manny, would you take a roll call vote, or excuse me, roll call, please?
Bob Richard?
Yes.
Kent Miller?
Yes.
Ruth Brown?
Yep.
Tony Gaimler?
Yes.
Matt Oddie?
Here.
Lloyd Latrell?
Present.
Robert Peterson?
Here.
Thank you. If you'd stand with me with the implication, the pledge, you know. Heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to come together as a governing body of our nice community. We ask you for much needed moisture across our whole community. We ask you to continue to bless our community with all the young people that we have in our community and the young people that we have coming back. We want you to put your arms around and protect our law enforcement and our servicemen as they serve and protect us here in our country and our. In your name, pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Floyd, do you have anything to say? Do not. Thank you. That? Yeah.
Floyd, no, no.
Uh, Bob, no.
Not hopeful.
No. Yeah.
I don't have anything, either, except for any.
Okay. I think Glenn's working on this.
Katie, do you have anything?
Don't have anything.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ronnie?
I mean, he could brain now, don't you?
Yeah, he could.
We'll do organs or something.
No, no, we do problems. So, okay, a few things before we get into the topic here tonight to distribute some information on, just to kind of bring you up to date, where utility work on Capeport campus, you know, we do have those easements out there and we're continuing. That's our crews out there that are doing the work on that. Um, up on the north campus, you may have noticed, doing some more work up there, commissioning the trail and the sidewalk. As a reminder, we have submitted to some well foundational reimbursement on that and we've got that back yet, but that's been funded through their grant from about two, three years ago now, plus the donations that we're doing on that. We'll finish that going up around then there. We had stopped that earlier and we're doing an allowance addition, which is done over there on Cherry Street. Uh, the LEC parking lot is going on at the same time. They're not competing naturally with each other. We have to let off once we do that and actually fish in the trap and a parking lot here, certainly by here. So, that's, that's how we're gonna fish up the north campus up there. Just kind of segwaying into that, including your packet here tonight was a couple of things, actually, from Mr. Cooper, who of course is a developer of Silver Fox Estates up there, requesting a different type of utility poles and some, some other things about, you know, anything up there. The, I guess the issue comes down to the fact that we traditionally have put in what we call wind poles. That's been our standard policy, although as Mike pointed out in some of the information he gave out, that for some reasons that hasn't always been followed, I'm sure why, it's an old policy. We found like back in the convoy edition back in the seventies and eighties when that was constructed, uh, they did pay for the upgrade in the metal poles. So, they went from the wooden poles to, to an extra, extra cost on that. And that's, that's how that was actually built out there, some of the other ones.
Floyd, what year, you said back in the seventies?
Well, they were, uh, back, well, he's, he's actually has some documents back to the, like, sixty-six to seventy-seven, or seventeen, three.
Yeah, but this thing was all updated, all new and everything in eighty-five?
In eighty-five, and they, and they did that, yeah, the north's addition, uh, for the update for that. So, um, so that's how that came about. So, the policy's maybe existed a long time and, uh, I get the point that it hasn't always been followed through the letter, I guess, throughout the years, of the metal poles put in downtown. We were some winged downtown, we did concrete poles and those are much more expensive. Uh, so I guess what we come down to is the fact that you have a policy in place and if there's a request for an upgrade or something like that, perhaps there's a compromise that can be done when we would share the difference, or they would, they would, if there was a queen, what it would cost to put in our regular pole and a, and a newer, different type of pole and whatever that would be.
What sort of cost difference is there between wood and metal?
Right now, the, the, uh, the wood pole's around two hundred, two hundred and fifty dollars somewhere in that range. Uh, we approached Chris Davis, who, um, is a supplier, we've worked with a lot, and asked him about metal poles, or right now they're about fifteen hundred dollars a piece. So, what they're requesting right now are two different poles out there on west side.
But is that also adding on the concrete?
You'd have to, yeah, actually, a concrete would be probably another couple hundred dollars.
The ground, I mean, yeah, it's good, still get about two thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah, when you're, when you're said and done, yeah, that cost for that pole, or metal pole would be around two thousand dollars. So, that's kind of where we're at. We met with Mr. Cooper out there last week, kind of talked about that and some other things.
How many poles would we need to fill that area?
Uh, five or six, but they only want two on that area that where the houses are being built now around that circle. The other ones are probably blocked where their property is, so, you know, we talked with Mike out there, so that probably wouldn't make a difference. He's just interested in the two on the western edge of that circle right now. That's it. So, we talked about a couple of.
Well, we're gonna mess around with two, we might as well mess around with the whole.
Well, yeah, you could.
Make it wild and short.
And, yeah, I mean, that would be the, probably the way you'd wanna go with it, but again.
That's the way we ought to go.
Request is for the two on which are of interest here. And I don't like to sit here and I can't kind of explain what, what it is, what that hole is. So, anyway, from our perspective, that's where we're at, that's what we actually put wind pole out there, uh, right now, just kind of while we're here tonight to talk about what we want to develop with it. So, as you get, and you, and, as you drive around town now, you can see metal, I mean, usually you don't notice, you're higher around, not usually looking at light poles, but I do now, as I go around, you'll see wood poles, metal poles.
Later on in the agenda, we have electric pole bid. Are those poles all wood that are bid towards our campus?
Is that what you're doing there, Ronnie? Is that, or is that a different project?
Uh, the thirty-five foot pole or a streetlight pole, uh, they may be used up there, but we've got other poles around town that are rotten, some of them gonna be used on that. That one's not all. Uh, it was a good deal bid, at least we know what the thirty-five foot pole is.
Your bid deal wrong is wooden pole, though.
Those are wood.
Yeah, it's wood, right. And I had a quote on one metal pole and that was fifteen hundred and something.
Fifteen hundred. And that changed at the same time you did. So, next week if we go down there, they'll probably close to that, or next month, or whenever we decide to do that. Uh, they may be a different cost, but I think it'll be pretty close, it fluctuates that much.
Do we need these poles even if, even, let's assume that the council decides to go metal, do we still need all these wooden poles regardless of?
Yeah, we have, we have a lot of poles actually that we'd like to replace that have been probably there for decades, that need to be taken out eventually.
No, that had some big problem first, didn't it?
So, regardless of the Cooper discussion, we still need those poles.
We always need a certain amount of hand, so it won't be a waste that I would there as far as proof of that. Seems like can't, yeah, if storm damage comes in, you never know, sixty mile an hour winds are gonna come at us and lines are gonna be taken down. So, you know, and you can talk about pros or cons of each and one of the talks, will one last one or the other one will cross one, will eventually get something else, or will it get divided more, I don't know, um, even around right the durability or who looks, uh, seems to be the biggest issue as far as, um, you know, pole itself, if you want a wind pole and that's a good issue, or you want all the metal. So, that's, that's where we're at then, and I'll, I'll turn it forward to Mike, if, under my report here, he can kind of tell you, um, what he's thinking about there, because he respected this on, uh, on the whole thing, so Mike, do you want to?
Thanks.
You can have the floor here in the middle of this.
Cameron. You gentlemen? Well, Glenn's already kind of given you a gist of it. Uh, one of the things that I would like to clarify just a little bit, when Ronnie told you the price of the pole, he didn't include the price of the arm for the light, because that's in the fifteen hundred dollars for the electrical, for the metal pole, that's, the lights included in that. In the two hundred and fifty to three hundred dollar price of the pole, that does not include the light, so you still gotta put the light on again, so there is more, I mean, it's probably gonna be closer to five or six hundred dollars is what your costs of the wind poles are gonna be, but. That's, that's contrary to the deal, because the, the problem that I got and, and, and the media and the public's not.
Is that right, Ronnie?
What's that?
Is that right, what he said?
Um, on a metal pole, you gotta have a different arm altogether.
But that includes, that fifteen hundred included the arm and the light and everything?
Right.
Right, because that was the deal you sent me. But your two hundred and fifty to three hundred dollars for the pole does not include the light in the arm, correct?
That's true.
Right.
But the same light would go over to that, that.
Well, how much more would it be for on the wooden pole for the, for the arm?
Uh, we bought those LED lights and they're a hundred and fifty-six bucks for the light, and that doesn't include the arm.
But, you know, and, and I, I mean, I don't wanna get into the, I don't, I don't wanna get into a discussion about one cost of this and one cost of that. I think, I think what I wanna discuss is what the city's thought process was in the development of North Campus, because it is an all-new area and it's all underground lighting. You've got all new streets, you've got two new homes going in right now. Ground was just broken the last two days for two new, two more new homes in Silver Fox Estate. And, you know, I, when I presented this program to you guys a year and a half ago, it was accepted with open arms, and this was gonna be the new gem for the city of Lloyd. And all of a sudden, now we're gonna stick big trees with lights on them out in the middle of this whole thing. I'm not just talking about Silver Fox Estate. I think the council should consider the entire north campus. If you go up on the old north campus, I've seen in your pictures, and I'd be more than happy to share with anybody, old north campus has just a metal decorative pole for the lighting up there. That's already there. When you go into Silver Fox, and when you go into Silver Fox Drive on the south, there's already three of these nice metal poles there. And then all of a sudden, we're gonna open up into these five hundred thousand dollar homes and we're gonna have wooden trees? I mean, seriously, I mean, Ronnie and I talked about this when we laid this thing out. We talked about the streetlights, and I explicitly said then, I said, make sure that we, we figure that we're gonna put some kind of a metal pole there, you know, so that it looks, guys. You know, we've done a lot of compromising on this project. We wanted, we wanted, lay down curves, we took stand-up curves. You know, we didn't get, we didn't get what we wanted there. You know, we, we've worked around other aspects of this whole thing. And now all of a sudden, you know, the homeowners, I have two of the homeowners here tonight, and, I mean, I'm saying within probably six hours of the city planting those two poles, I was getting phone calls, well, I know what's going on. Why are we putting big old crooked wooden poles in my front yard? You know, uh, in my, in my presentation to you gentlemen, I sent pictures of you to Supple. These are projects that I've been personally involved in. Supple Avenue, I was involved in that, I was, some of the first new homes built over there when that street was brought in. I know those streetlights was never paid by for anybody. Those were metal poles put back in. I know that project was. North Pine Edition, that we done up there, which is the armory at the end of North Pine. I didn't ask for that streetlight to be put in there. The city chose, because it's an underground system up there, they chose to put that nice light at the end of that street. The Ackerman Edition, I talked to HJ the other day, and, you know, HJ says to me, he says, I can't tell you. He said, Dad's gone, but he said, I'll tell you, you know, if the city would have made him pay for light poles, I'm sure I would have heard about it. You know, and so, uh, you know, so I don't know, you know? I'm just saying, guys, I mean, be considerate on this thing. You know, we're, we're developing a new area in the city of Lloyd, and all of a sudden you want to just stick big old wooden telephone poles up there and stick all ugly streetlights on them? Get real, this thing is, this is a, this is a new place for the city. I mean, why would you wanna bugger it up like that? I mean, you know, I don't know, I don't think it's my responsibility as the developer to pay for these poles. I think that the cities, you know, the city should have some.
Am I?
Uh-huh, go ahead, Bob, I'm sorry.
I got a citation from Mr. Conroy. He developed over there, uh, Conroy Edition. He paid for every one of them poles. In fact, some of the people living there are even helping pay for them. I know that for a fact, and it's not a lie.
I mean, I, I even.
He helped fund back the city.
I'm not gonna dispute that with you, Bob, I mean, I'm really not, I mean.
Well, that tells you that he's a kind man and he believes in the finances on way.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, I'm just, I'm not talking about Silver Fox. For Silver Fox Estate, we only had two light poles involved, it's on Silver Fox Estate. The rest of them are all sitting on the outside of the city property, if I understood, Ron, correct? I mean, so there's only two light poles that's setting on our property.
Okay, then. If you wanna buy them, that's fine.
But, but what I'm asking you is, why would you want, why would you wanna clutter up the rest of the area?
Well, we're not cluttering up, I got wooden poles on my house. You think that's cluttering me? No way.
You got underground power lines buried at your house?
No.
No. Go, go to any place.
I don't care.
Go to any place in the city of Lloyd that has an underground light system and find me wooden poles.
Mike, there's one right at the end of my block. It's a silver painted wooden pole, it's been there for twenty-five years.
Well.
Wooden pole painted silver?
You know.
That's an alternative. Because they didn't wanna pay for the steel pole.
I guess, you know, I guess if, I guess if the city, if the city wants to just take and turn that thing into everything else, you know, and just do it the way you wanna do it, just stick the wooden poles up out there and clutter the whole area up with them, yep, that's fine, that's your decision.
Why are you blaming us for that? And you wouldn't take some responsibility if you wanted, if you knew that, if, I'm just saying, wait, wait, wait.
Listen, go ahead, to me first.
If, if you had known that that's what the policy was with the wooden poles.
We would have been discussing this when we was in contract. That's what would have happened. If I would have known, if I would have known.
So, did you make an assumption?
Yes, I made an assumption, because Ronnie and I talked about it.
Did he tell, did he tell you that he would put metal poles in?
No, he never said, he said, we discussed the metal poles, and he said, we'll have to see what we can get down here, he said, we've done metal poles before, and that was the conversation. It was not until a week ago that I was given your nineteen eighty-five ordinance, saying.
Well, when you discussed that with them, that's when you should have come to the council.
I'm, I'm thinking that most of the people sitting here at this table weren't around in nineteen eighty-five either, and we didn't, and we didn't see that until.
It was probably.
This week.
Right, and see, neither did I. And so, I mean, there's been, there's been no, there's been no discussion about this until the two poles got set. The discussion was that we was gonna do metal poles. That was the discussion prior to, if I would have known.
Is that right, Ron?
Uh, mid-budge, we did talk about the light poles and.
So, we discussed the wooden poles.
We did talk metal. What's that?
Just wait, let, let, go ahead, Ronnie.
Um, we did talk about metal poles and, uh, we also talked about concrete poles, and I said, we'd have to follow the policy, and that's what was said.
Okay.
And it was dropped at that.
That's it right there.
We never said anymore.
Follow the policy, follow, what policy?
It's like they're paying.
Did he ever tell me the policy? He never discussed the policy with me.
But I, I told you I had to follow the policy, Mike.
Well, I take his.
Okay, let me ask, let me ask anybody, let me see a show of hands, anybody in this room that knew what the policy was before a week ago? I'd like to see a show of hands.
Anybody in this room know that nobody else paid for a metal pole?
I know for a fact.
No. Anybody else in the room?
Oh, no, I don't know.
I didn't know.
Yeah, I don't know. Listen, listen to me, guys, listen to me, guys. I will physically pay the difference between the two poles, that's not a big issue to me. The two poles that I'm getting questioned, I will physically pay the difference between those two poles and two metal poles. I do not have a problem doing that, but I think that you need to consider what you're gonna develop the rest of that area to look like, because I think, I think that you're making a big mistake if you're gonna take a brand-new development area, it's all underground system, and go out there and stick a bunch of wooden telephone poles.
Mike, I don't, I don't think that that's the issue, because I think that metal poles would look fantastic out there. But what we're looking at is the policy that was adapted, adopted back in eighty-five, when probably nobody was even, were you on the council in eighty-five? Okay. And nobody, you know.
But that's what the, the council has the ability to alter.
I don't know if it wasn't popular, I don't know that people, whoever build for the poles, I mean, Tom, Tom paid for his.
If, if, if Tom arrived.
Okay, so, Mike, you're willing to pay for the two.
I'm willing to pay for the two poles funds over Fox Lane.
And you're suggesting.
If, if, if that's what it boils down, if the city will not consider putting all the poles out there that way. You know, if you're gonna put them all out there, then I think you need to treat everybody fairly and do them all.
Exactly, I would agree with that, but I think, but I think we haven't had this discussion about poles on the rest of the property.
I'm seeing that that's the problem.
My opinion is, though, that they would have the same option you do, they could pay for the upgrade to the metal poles if they, anybody that wanted to build out there.
The city has, the city's gonna be putting streetlights in on all the intersections out there long before you have all the properties sold. You gonna do that, Ronnie?
I got a question.
We got mugs of the conduit, yeah. Uh, we talked about putting maybe a pole or something else to rub the conduit up so we know where it's at.
How, how many properties remain unpurchased?
No, no, the entire north campus is out there. I don't know what the latest count is on that, I'm telling you the truth.
You got a rough percentage of how many?
It's.
Oh, I mean, that's.
Yeah, I think we're, yeah, probably a little over half, I would think, of just the tracks and all that.
Or sold?
Uh, that aren't, that aren't.
That aren't?
Yeah, I bet that was. Yeah, it's about, it's probably.
Does that count sold as the ones that are, have an option?
Those options have gone away because they haven't built on them, so they lost their options.
But the thing, as I remember the, the thought process, we were gonna develop that way up there, and that would cause people to buy the property because it would be developed, and we're halfway there, we've got the streets and we've got the electricity and we've got the sewer in. This is one more infrastructure thing that's gonna entice the remaining fifty percent to get sold.
How many more poles?
He said, I'm hearing six total for that area?
For that area.
For silver, five percent. There's two, there's two that's actually located on Silver Fox Lane, and then the other four are actually located on the outside perimeter area of Silver Fox Drive, which would be on city side.
So, six in that whole development area?
In that area right there.
Total.
For this area, yeah.
For this.
So, two of Silver Fox Drive and four outside.
But that's the ones that go around the outside of Silver Fox.
Just across the street.
Then you've got, you've probably got, what, nine other intersections up there. Probably got nine more intersections.
So, we're looking at fifteen total.
Probably looking at fifteen lights to do the whole thing.
Is, is that gonna break, is that gonna break it?
No, it's not gonna break the electric department. The only thing, the only reason we're here tonight is, you know, we don't have anything as a staff against metal poles. It's just that all of a sudden, you, you're confronted this issue of the policy, and people have paid some, and the other ones, I don't know what, I was in a party.
Well, well, it's strange way, the, the new street that was put in front of our building out there. I didn't ask for metal poles, I said, you put metal poles out there, nice metal poles.
Well, if you wanna pay for it, we'll, we'll take you there.
Yeah, so I guess the question then is, do you wanna, you know, alter the policy or?
I don't think we wanna have, you pay for, if you wanna pay for it, you pay for it, because then you're gonna have some with wood, some with metal, and it's gonna look like a Frankenstein area, I think it's gonna look really bad if you got.
Well, if we put them in, everybody would gonna come and say, hey, I want, I want metal pole, my. Now, what are you gonna do?
And I want, and I want my light, and I want the wires underground.
You see, you guys are being very candid about this, I mean, you're, you're.
No, no, we're, we're there.
You are, you are, you're being very candid about, Bob. I'm gonna, I'm gonna read this discussion to you guys.
You have a.
May I, I'm Stephanie Litten, and I live at Seven Silver Fox. I'm married to Travis Litten, and we chose to move back here because of the community, and we chose to build a house in that area because the beauty. And, um, we're spending probably more than what we should, but we were very excited to be where we're at. Now, when the light pole went in, and it's in my front yard, right next to my driveway, like, that's all I see when I come out of the south entrance, is when I come over the hill, I see this big wooden pole that's faded in front of my house. And I think the difference from what Mr. Peterson said is that, um, what we're paying, to be in this wonderful division, that we will be paying lots of taxes for, that I spent a lot of money here in Beloit to build, is that I'm hoping that the city considers that we are kind of genuating, I can't even tell you how many times people have said, I drove past your house, I'm going down to Silver Fox, that there's some excitement and that people are excited about that new area and that a lot of people would like to build up there. Um, and I think how we're presenting that, hopefully, um, will help the city in the future. I know that we, I wasn't from Beloit, and I, I wanna come back here and I wanna be here, and, um, I think where we're at is going to be a great place. Um, I don't know all the past history, I can sense some of it, but, um, I hope that you just consider, um, the homeowners there and, um, the joy that we have in our place and that a wooden pole is kind of hard to look at when you're looking out your front door.
Would you be willing to pay the difference in the pole or get a new pole in?
No.
I would, if I was building a house like that.
But I feel like I'm already spending a lot of money here in Beloit, that it's a city pole.
Mike said he's offered to pay for those, right?
I'm offered, I've offered to pay for the two poles, is in question. I think the question that I have is I'd like for the council to consider what you're gonna do with the rest of, if you're gonna do the poles on the whole development, then I don't feel that I should have to pay for them, because I think that, I think that you're making a mistake, and I, and I, I think that's it, it's nail on the hip. Why do you wanna mix and match this stuff all over the thing? If you're gonna make it a new development, you're gonna make it enticing for people, you know, it's no different than when you change the streetlights downtown, to how many people, you know, I mean, I'm sure all of them, I mean, people just, just, just so ecstatic about I mean, people just, just, just so ecstatic about what that looked like. You know, I mean, you take little things like that, those are subtle hints, but those people look at that kind of stuff. You know, somebody sitting there looking at an intersection out there in the north campus on the north park with a wooden light pole and a little street light on it may not think nothing about it, but if they seen one with a metal pole and a nice metal on it and stuff, a lot of them might say, wow, this is all new out here, this is all modern.
Can I, I mean, Mike, I don't think, there's no question that we knew that those lights would look better. And I went up by your house today and I understand wholeheartedly what you're talking about. But if you go back, okay, we had a policy, whoever was on the city council at that time had a policy established. This is what the city would do.
Why is that?
Can that?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay. That policy was established. None of us in here had anything to do with that policy. I guess my, my question is, if I was a developer, I think I would've checked to find out what is the policy on the lighting. And maybe, maybe that isn't the developer's issue. Maybe, cause I don't know anything about developing an area with a house like, like you folks, it's a beautiful house, but, you know? But I guess I would've, my question would've been to the city, okay, what kind of lights are you gonna be putting in? And if nothing was decided and Ronnie goes, puts a, a crooked wooden pole in, which I, or overly understand does not look very aesthetic out there in the area. But I'm, I'm not quite for sure where you're coming at because we have a policy that was put into place. We take, either we go by the policy or we change the policy. And right now, that policy is there. Well, for the, what sounds like for the immediate cause, Mike's willing to step up and take care of the two out there in front of the, the other line.
I'll pay the difference between.
Yeah, the difference.
I'm not gonna pay for the whole pole, I'll pay the difference.
I think that, first, I think that's a fair offer. And then I think we as a council need to discuss how we wanna move forward with that. I don't think tonight's the night that I decide, we just got all the information, but I, I think that, I, which with myself, I hadn't thought about the metal poles to the whole thing. And I think, you know, aesthetically, it would look nice that way. So I think, you know, it's gonna be what, thirty thousand dollar expenditure if we go that route. But like Matt stated.
Nine, nine.
For fifteen, for, I mean, for the north park, uh, Silver Fox and everything.